Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome you to the Lunenburg Zoning Board of Appeals. I'm going to tell you how the hearing will proceed, but first I have to give you a notification that this hearing is being recorded in accordance of the requirements of the opening meeting law. Please be advised that this meeting will be broadcast live through local access cable, on Facebook Live, on the public access Facebook page, and will be able to be found in the Lunenburg Public Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the meeting. To participate remotely...
Recording in progress.
That's okay. To participate remotely from a computer, go to Zoom Meeting. Computer and app users may use the raise hand feature to request a speak. I'd like to introduce you to the board. My less is Lisa Norman and the board secretary, Alfred Gravell. This is James Bezakowski, Hans Winthrop, Patrick Callahan, Tony Nacastro, Don Gurney, and Steve Duba. The way the hearing will proceed is Lisa will read the application and any other submitted communications. The applicant will have the opportunity for comments on the application or submission of additional documents. You will please come forward to the mic and give your name and address. Board members will have the opportunity to ask questions that they may have while you are at the mic. There will be a public comment period. You will please come forward to the mic, give your name and address, and please address all comments and questions to the board. And with that, I would ask Lisa to please read the petition.
This is an application for a special permit. Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, Zoning Board of Appeals. The name and address of the applicant is Phil Colometta, manager of Colometta Corporation, 524 New West Townsend Road in Lunenburg. The undersigned hereby makes application as follows. Seeking a special permit for relief from the lot width through building requirement, Section 250 5.1b to construct a duplex. The proposed action has not begun. The basis for this application is found in the following section of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 250 5.1b. Street address is 1207 Massachusetts Avenue, assesses map 61 parcel 23. The name and address of each holder of legal title to the land which is the subject of this case is Stanley N. and Marie Barney, 1236 Mass Ave in Lunenburg. The deed is recorded in Western Northern District Registry of Deeds Book 3384, Page 121, and recorded May 7, 1999. The questions and answers of the special permit section are as follows. The question, will the proposed action be injurious or dangerous to the public health or unduly hazardous because of traffic congestion, danger of fire or explosion, or other reasons? The response, the proposed addition of a duplex to a residential area should not cause issues related to public health, traffic congestion, fire, or explosion hazards, or other concerns when conducted in accordance with local building codes and regulations. B, will this action have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the neighborhood, or on the amenities of the neighborhood? The reply, when executed thoughtfully and in compliance with local regulations, the addition of a duplex to a neighborhood will not have a material adverse effect on the value of land and buildings in the area or on the neighborhood's amenities. C, will the proposed action be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness if an open use? The response, yes, when property owners and occupants of the proposed duplex maintain the property with adherence to local regulations, property maintenance codes, and community standards, it can be operated with reasonable regard for order and sightliness. And D, will the proposed action produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property? And the reply, no, the proposed action of the construction of the duplex is not expected to produce noise, vibration, dust, odor, heat, or glare observable at the lot lines in amounts clearly detrimental to the normal use of adjacent property. And that's signed on December 27, 2023 by Philip Colometta, 524 New West Townsend Road in Lunenburg. I have a letter here from the surveying engineer regarding lot width special permit for dimensional variation requests, 1207 Massachusetts Avenue. Dear members of the board, I am writing on behalf of Mr. Phil Colometta, who will be the owner of the above referenced property upon which he wishes to build a new single family home or duplex. He is seeking relief from the lot width through building requirement of the Lunenburg zoning bylaw, Section 250 5.1b. The locust property exceeds all other applicable requirements for frontage lot area, et cetera. The lot width through building requirement is onerous on lots that comply with minimum frontage requirements but do not meet the lot width through building requirement. As an example, the abutting property at 1205 Massachusetts Avenue does not comply with the lot width requirement, yet a house was built upon it in 1997 according to assessing records. Both lots 1205 and 1207 Massachusetts Avenue exceed all other dimensional requirements but are noncompliant with the lot width through building requirement. I have attached a plan which shows the properties referenced to above. If you have any questions, please do not hesitate to contact me at the number below. Alfred M. Berry, and my phone number is attached. Because Mr. Colometta does not own the property, we received this letter to whom it may concern. I authorize Phil Colometta to petition on behalf of Barney Property, 1207 Massachusetts Avenue in Lunenburg. And that's signed, sincerely, Marie L. Barney. And there is an attached certified list of abutters, all whom were notified two weeks prior to tonight's meeting. We also received a memo from the building commissioner yesterday. Hello. Recently, there have been some inquiries regarding the hearing this coming Wednesday regarding the relief you are seeking at 1207 Mass Ave. I have since received a copy of the plan that delineates wetlands on the lot. Per Section 250 5.1a, wetlands or land underwater in all districts know more than 10% of the required lot area as defined in this Article 5 shall consist of wetlands or land underwater. The plans do not show the actual area of land that has been delineated as wetlands. Given the required lot area of 40,000 square feet, you would require at least 36,000 square feet of non-wetlands lot area to be a conforming lot. You should be prepared to address this at the ZBA hearing this week. And that's signed, Brian Gingras, from the Lunenburg Building Commissioner. I also received a memo today. Hi, Lisa. If I could impose on you to communicate to the Zoning Board of Appeals that Lunenburg Estates Realty Trust, being an abutted to the parcel known as 1207 Massachusetts Avenue, has no objection to the pending petition before the ZBA presented by Colometta Corporation for the construction of a duplex to be located on the parcel as shown on the plan submitted to the ZBA with the pending petition. Please be advised that this email communication may be presented to the ZBA as written confirmation of the above. Sincerely, James Moriarty, Corporate Counsel for Lunenburg Estates Realty Trust, 14 Manning Ave in Leominster, Mass. And that's all, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Lisa.
You're welcome.
And with that, I would invite the applicant up to the mic to speak to the issues.
Phil Colometta, 524 New West Townsend Road. So upon seeing this property come available a few weeks back, months back, we looked at it for face value. We went down to the town hall and pulled his property card. It is coded 130, which would be deemed that it's vacant land developable. Upon looking at the card a little further, finding out some more value, that there's a sewer lateral that was put in in 2000, early 2003, I believe it was. So when they went down the street, they put a lateral over, calling it a potentially buildable lot. So we looked into that. We put it under agreement to develop it. Then we looked further, talked to the building inspector, and he said that there's a lot width relief that's needed. So that's why I'm here today in front of you guys, essentially.
The lot width through the house, I believe, is what you have is 125?
Correct.
And the regulation is 175? So, okay, so he made you aware of that.
Yeah, in '71, I believe in '71, there was a bylaw change to 175. But the lot was created pre-existing.
In regards to the wetlands, I just wanted to say that we didn't advertise that. We don't, in my opinion, have enough information to act on that part because we really don't have any information on how much wetlands is there, anything about it. So I don't believe we will act on that part of it.
Yeah, I wasn't prepared for that at this time, at this meeting.
Okay. All right. I just wanted to make sure that you knew that. You know, it just came yesterday. We have not enough information.
Yeah, we're just here for the lot width right now.
Yeah, for the lot width, correct. Okay, one thing, one other question. When they read the architects, he said a residential or a duplex. But you plan on strictly a duplex?
I'd be open to a single family, but it's kind of an economics question at that point where the lot has to, the house has to be built closer to the road due to some restrictions in the back. So I believe a duplex would fit nicely on that property.
Okay.
But by right on Residence A, you have a single or duplex, single or two-family.
Do you, I don't know if you would know this. Do you know when that lot was created?
1969, I believe, if I have it in the...
1969?
I believe. We were trying to follow it because since it's similar names, it was like the Barney Dairy Farm Corporation owned the whole piece, and they cut it off to Wilbur and Teresa, who weren't married at the time. And Wilbur owned one lot, and then Teresa owned the other, and then they, I believe they got married at that point. It's kind of hard to follow.
Okay, okay. Maybe we'll look into that. I'm going to open it up to the board for any questions. May I?
I have a couple questions, Mr. Chairman. So are we trying to establish whether it was a pre-existing non-conforming lot?
Well, that's why I asked him. Because if it was 1969 and you can establish that, I believe...
I think we should find that out because, I mean, you know, in all honesty, you don't have the lot through the width, right?
Correct.
That's a requirement. I mean, it says right here in the bylaw, you know, you have to have that, and you don't. You have 1, what'd you say, 125?
We have 175, yeah.
So you have that going against you. That's my biggest concern. However, I'd like to know a couple things. I'd like to know, like, I'd like to find out when that was, you know, when that...
Officially, correct.
Because that will determine whether it was a pre-existing non-conforming lot because what I really think you guys are asking for is a variance, which is much different than a special permit, and you do not meet the statutory requirements. At least you haven't shown that in terms of like the topography, the slope of the property. So, I mean, you can do, like, I understand it's a special permit dimensional variation, and typically we see that when it comes to the, you know, the rear setbacks, the side setbacks, maybe the height. But I'm an advocate of, you know, the bylaw is the bylaw. We interpret the bylaw. We don't make up the bylaw, right? The town said you need 175, you know, feet through the lot width. You don't have it. But if you can establish that that was a pre-existing non-conforming lot when they chopped it up prior to the zoning, you may have a claim to that. And then the other thing that you brought up that is interesting is that they put a stub there on the sewer. And I suspect that that was probably, because the 40B or the old 40B that we approved is behind you, correct?
Yeah, to the right.
Exactly. So I don't know. I mean, well, I could say that, you know, if you have a stub there too, you may be entitled to, I don't know. I'm just saying that for me, you know, special permit dimensional variation, I get it, it's to tweak things when we can't, you know, move, but to me, like, the required lot width through the building is, you know, fundamental. That's one of the things that you have to have, and it's, again, it's the town that says you have to have that. It's not us. We're just interpreting what the bylaw says.
Yeah, so we have the frontage at 125. We have the area at 42,000 square feet.
Yeah, you have everything except the lot width.
Exactly. So that's, this relief is the avenue for this. This is why I'm here asking for that relief.
No, I understand that. I understand.
I will say, Hans, you do have the right to ask for it under a dimensional variation, and we actually can grant it under a dimensional variation.
Yeah, this is the avenue for it because at no fault of anyone here or the town, this lot now is a standalone lot. Folks to the left and right are two different owners. We have this one lot in the middle. What are we going to do with it, essentially? The town sees it as a buildable, a developable piece. The sewer's been paved, that kind of stuff. So that's why I'm here asking for the relief of that 175.
And then do you have, I know the wetlands doesn't come in tonight, but do you have an approximate idea of how much relief you're going to need from that? Because that's another strike, is the fact that...
I don't have any comment on that. That was just brought to the building department the other day.
Yeah, that just came up yesterday from what I saw.
Have you been to the Conservation Commission on that?
This would be the first step. We have it delineated for this, but the next step would be that process because we don't, I technically don't own it, the property. So we need the relief because that's what the town's requiring, and it's what it needed, and then the next step is that side.
To Hans' point about the non-conforming lot, if it was indeed 1969, I believe that the, that came, the non-conforming pre-existing zoning came in 1975, I believe.
'72.
Was it '72? I know it was '72.
March 4th, '72, the lot width went from 125 to 175.
Okay, so there must be records of that.
Wait, so are you saying that it had the lot width before it changed the zoning?
Correct.
I believe so. If that date is correct that he's saying.
Yeah, that came directly from Annie, from the planning board.
Came from who?
The Planning Board Department.
Oh, it did?
Yeah.
Okay. Can we get proof of that?
Sure.
Okay, so we're gonna, we're gonna ask for the proof, trace that back. And we'll also confirm the date that the actual zoning went into effect on the non-conforming pre-existing lot. Okay. And as far as the wetlands, like we say, we don't have enough information, so we won't do that. I'm gonna see if there's any more questions from the board.
I just wanted to make one comment. When I, I was trying to look up the process of getting the sewer, and there is, you know, some kind of inspection or, you know, they do obviously require like a permit, a fee, and it, so that's kind of where I kind of, like, at some point, they must have been inspected and allowed to get that sewer access because it was a buildable lot. But again, I don't know what that...
Yeah, I think we gotta dig a little deeper into this. Okay. Any other questions from the board? I'm going to ask for public comment at this time. Yeah, if you could sit, and if we need you again, we'll call you back up.
Yeah, sure.
Yes?
My name's Heather Fix, 1205 Massachusetts Avenue in Lunenburg. Just wanted to make a comment, kind of about what you guys were talking about. Mr. Colometta used my property, 1205 Mass Ave, on his engineer's letter that he wrote as an example as to why the special permit should be approved because stating that my law also does not comply with the lot width requirement, yet a house was built on it in 1997. This is false. My property was built in 1971, when Lunenburg bylaws required 125 feet of lot width. The bylaw was then changed in 1972, as mentioned, to require 175 feet. So 1205 Mass Ave was then no longer conforming, but 1205 Mass Ave and 1207 Mass Ave were held in common ownership by the Barneys, which then brought it into conformity. So that's my comment about that. And then the other comment I had was about the wetlands, but I don't know if I should bring that up or we should wait.
You can, you can bring it up now if you would like, just so we have an idea, but then you can also, you know, you can speak again, you know, and when we bring up the wetlands. What we're probably doing, I don't know till we finish, we probably will continue it till we can get information.
Okay. So the plan that was provided in the application, where the wetlands markers are, I had measured for square footage, which ended up being...
I've measured.
Okay, so...
It's somebody on Zoom.
Just trying to find my... So the total wetlands that was measured was 11,986 square feet. Like you said, 4,000 of that's allowed to be wetlands, as well as the 2,688 extra square foot that he has. So the 11,986 minus the 2,688 would be 9,298 square feet, which would be 23% wetlands in the area. And that's just from the plan that I took a copy of.
And that's the plan you're talking about?
Yes.
And you think it's 23%?
Yes.
I think we'll find out next hearing when the engineer does his...
Just based on where the...
Yeah, it's good.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all.
Very good.
Just opposing this, so, thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to speak?
No.
No? Okay. Okay, with that, if the applicant can come back, I found, if the applicant can come back. If the board allows it, if they have no more questions, I think what we should do is continue this to a time and date certain, so we can research the information and find out, you know, and then we'll meet again for another hearing. I know that our next February, what, 14th is full, so it would have to be the hearing after that.
Which would be...
Sounds right.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, it's Valentine's Day is the other one, right? The 14th and that 14, 28?
What's that?
28. I think it's the 28th.
Okay. You're right, the 28th.
28th? That's good. Nothing scheduled then, right? So we could put you right on at 7 o'clock. Okay. I will ask for a motion to continue this hearing to...
We want to...
Oh, if you have anybody on Zoom, please.
So I think it's your surveyor?
Possibly.
Do you know if he has any of that?
I'm not sure if he does. I haven't...
If you do, just raise your hand, or you should be able to speak. I'm seeing none, and...
No, 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 no.
I think he's trying.
I think he's there.
I am here, but your administrator has not let me do my video.
Well, we can hear you.
Okay, good. I just verified that these two lots were created in 1969, you know, September 3rd, 1969. I give you book and page if you want that.
That would be great.
There I am. So, and, you know, the Barney family or the Barney Dairy Bar, they had a lot of things going on here. I don't know if any of you are old enough to remember the Dairy Bar, are you?
I do.
But this property was clearly owned, even though they had the same last name, by Wilbur Barney on one lot, and then Teresa Barney on the other lot. I just want to make that clear.
Okay. And did you have the book and page, you said?
Yep. All right, so they are one page apart, just, so the first one where it went to Wilbur was Book 10, 4, 5, 6, 2. Everybody got that?
Yeah.
Okay, and then when it went to Teresa, or Therese...
Did you have the page number in that also?
I do. On the first one?
Yes.
Okay, that was 62.
62. Okay, thank you.
Yep, and then when the other one went to Teresa, or Therese, I can't, you know, pronounce her name, but it's 10, 4, 5, 63. They're clearly two different owners.
Okay, thank you.
So just for clarification, that's Book 1, 0, 4, 5, Page 6, 3.
Yep, and 6, 2.
Right.
6, 2 was the first one, and 6, 3 was the second one, okay? I know it's kind of like getting down into the weeds a bit, but that's what we have.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. If nothing else to be said?
So I have, are we continuing it because, for what reason, I guess?
Well, we're continuing it. We will look up in research to see if it is indeed a non-conforming, a pre-existing non-conforming lot.
Okay.
Okay? The second thing is if we find that it doesn't quite fall under that for any reason, then what we will do is we will do both the, through the house, and the wetlands.
Do I have to reapply for the wetlands at all?
What's that?
Do I have to do anything for the wetlands? Do I have to reapply?
We basically have to figure out the actual square footage, so we'll probably be asking some input from conservation and maybe the planning.
Okay.
Okay.
So not enough information to do the lot width through the building tonight?
Well, it makes more sense to do it.
Yeah, I agree. Okay. I just didn't know if there was something else I need to present to you guys.
Yeah, I mean, we could do that tonight.
No, I'm fine with however you seem fit.
If you find out you got more than 10%, now you're going to come back and you're asking for...
You'll be back again, right?
So, doesn't make sense to give you one relief when we don't know the information in front of us. Like, I want to know, I want to know the years.
Right.
Whether that's a pre-existing non-conforming lot, because it's a moot point unless you're like, if that's the case, that's important, but then you've got now the wetlands. We need to know the percentage of the wetlands because you're only allowed 10%.
But that's not another minute on the agenda. That's all in the same...
All combined.
Yeah, we'll combine.
We're gonna make a holistic, you know, vote on yes or no on your application.
I know you're probably anxious to get moving.
No, no, I just want to make sure it's done in a straight path.
Yeah, well, the next hearing, we would like to try and wrap it up.
Okay. If there's anything else I need to do or provide?
I don't believe so, but you can check in with Lisa.
Most important, the percentage of the wetlands, I suppose.
Right. So if you want to do that, I'm sure she'll be more than happy. She's very helpful.
Okay.
Okay, could I have a motion?
So...
I'm not voting, Mr. Chairman.
Right. Motion to continue to the February 24th, that's second.
28.
28.
28, I'm sorry. That's why I don't make the motion.
I make a motion that we continue to February 28th at 7:00 p.m.
Second.
Second. Have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 You got one there? Aye. Okay, with that, this hearing is over, and we'll meet again on the 28th.
That's good, thank you.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Lisa, do you want me to hold on this, or do you want that?
Yeah, I'll take that.
Okay.
Well, you know what? I can get, I have it on email. I can see that one.
You hold on to it.
Well, we all have it on email.
Oh, that was this one?
Yeah, I think so.
What's that?
I'll make a motion.
These, no, no, they're going around and never meet them. House that way.
Second to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, I'm just trying.
Aye.
I wanted to ask, that was, that gave the dates, because I was having trouble finding the dates.
What's that again?
He was the, he was the land surveyor that was in the application. He was the, he was the land surveyor that was in the application.
Okay.
That's the person that was on the phone.
Okay, this is pretty too separate, but then--